Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Can we have a roll call?
Commissioner Slaughter. Commissioner Bracy.
Yes.
Commissioner Jimenez. Here. Commissioner Lightman. And Commissioner Fires.
Present.
And I do show Commissioner Ten Eyck is absent and Commissioner King is absent.
Has everyone had a chance to read the minutes from last meeting? Is there a discussion or should we have a motion to accept the minutes?
Motion to accept the minutes or to approve the minutes for July 20, 2022.
We have a motion to accept the minutes last in a second. All those in favor, do you want to?
I'll go over them. Commissioner Slaughter. Commissioner Bracy.
Hi.
Commissioner Jimenez.
Hi.
Commissioner Lightman.
Hi.
And Commissioner Fires.
Yes.
Motion carries. No public hearings, discussion items, the planning official report.
So I just provided for you all what I had provided to the city council for their meeting at the beginning of the month. It's just kind of a narrative of I start out with kind of first day on the job and everything that happened there. And that we've just been working to put some fires out and work through the things that were right there in front of us and it's beginning to feel like it's beginning to feel like we're past the conflagration, so to speak, and moving on to, you know, just daily tasks and figuring things out. And there's still a lot of that going on, figuring out the code, figuring out what the process has been and kind of what it needs to be and, you know, figuring out how to make those transitions. It's really hard to say, I know you didn't have to go through that before, but this time you have to do a little more and so, you know, trying to incrementally move people, you know, down the path that we need to move them down. But some of the fires. We, oh, we finally, we finalized the zoning approval for Yuma's Electric, that's old news. What I will say is that there is a Luba appeal active. They appeal to, to you from here to city council and they sense appeal to Luba. And if someday you want, if you want to ask that question, what is Luba? Feel free to ask it and I'm happy to kind of go through that if there's any lingering questions about that. Also finished the zoning approval for the Loop Roads, Gates Lane and Devon Loop, all on the east side of Laurel Lane. That's also been appealed to Luba. The planning official decision was appealed to you all, appealed to city council, now it's also Luba. There are ones a little further ahead than the other one, but they're both worked through that process. The one thing I will say is that they've, they've put the Loop Roads, they kind of suspended the Loop Roads with the passing of Terry Tolman. So as a family, they've made that decision. We are working through the Porta Moro interchange area management plan that public hearing has been held here in front of you. It's been, the county planning commission heard it and approved it, the city council has heard it and approved it. We're now waiting for the board of commissioners, I believe it is next Wednesday, the 24th. So we should see that move forward to hearing at that point in time and hopefully that keeps moving forward. Once the four entities here all approve it, it still has to go to the Oregon Transportation Commission, but as I understand it, they have changed in the internal proceedings of the ODOT how they do that. And it doesn't actually have to go in front of the OTC, they've allowed it to be a director level approval. So hopefully when it gets there, it'll go a little faster, we should see that happen hopefully in November if all goes as planned. We did adopt a new fee schedule, hopefully that's easier. If you haven't been out to Yates Lane off of Laurel, you should, it's paved, it's striped, the signs are in. It's nice. It's nice, you can get around in there and it's just a nice. So that, part of that was funded with small city allotment funding, so we worked through that process. And the next thing we'll do is be applying for this next year's small city allotment. And hopefully we'll focus on the project we originally were going to do, which is here at Southeast Front and First Street, so around the sleep-in. This actually came from Rolf and I because not, not long after I started, Rolf probably came on to the city team here. And we've been working closely together, kind of trying to figure out where things were at, clean up what we had in Barry's office, get some organization. And so he's been doing a lot of help with that, working to set up a filing system. Some other accomplishments, I actually identified that we've met several times and worked to a lot of those approvals and some others, a replat, a variance, a couple of other items. I haven't actually done an account and I don't know how many were done in the first month and a half of the year. But I know the most recent zoning permit I saw had like set the number 70 something on it. So that tells me that 70 zoning permits have come through in this year and we're in August. So I don't know what the funding number's going to be. Eventually I hope to kind of get a better handle on that and be able to report that to both you all as well as the city council. Because a lot of those decisions you don't see because it's approval of a residential dwelling and a residential neighborhood, which is a use allow. So we still do an evaluation, having met setbacks, those types of things, but there have been a lot of those this year. The Wood Hill River Ridge Estates continues to build, Bailey Park continues to build. We've just issued zoning permits for several fourplexes on this, on the subdivision that was done just right here, south of, south of here. And then we're beginning to issue the zoning approvals for the Tidewater Community Living Project. So the clubhouse slash sales office, the six apartment buildings have all gone through the planning and utility process and are now to building permits. And we anticipate zoning requests fairly quickly on 12 of the townhouse units. We haven't seen those come in yet, but there's a total of 76 townhouse units. So they've got two real close and then one further back, it's all part of phase one. So we should see those fairly soon. So we're staying busy with that kind of current, current work. We've been, Rolf and I have been figuring out, you know, Barry was kind of a one-stop shop and, and he understood the, the infrastructure part and that's not where my background is. So Rolf and I have been figuring out what our respective roles are as we try to figure out what all Barry did in, in, during the day. So we're continuing to work on that. Rolf has been getting up to speed with the, the infrastructure installations and making sure that the testing happens when it happens. And they're putting in based on the engineers approved plans and those types of things, so. It's probably been about two months ago, we started doing a weekly development team meeting. Karen, Rick, Rolf, myself, Mike Lees, the city engineer, Kevin Kennedy, and then as needed Glenn with the building program, Jose as co-enforcement, and others, and we just take a couple hours on Thursday mornings and just kind of figure out where we're at, what's going on and have that conversation. And I think we're getting better on the follow-up and follow-through and so it's taking time, but it's happening. We did identify that we needed to establish a sidewalk inspection program and Rolf is doing that. That's a new addition or a newer addition, making sure that sidewalks are being put where we thought they were going to be, that they have the 88 slope where appropriate. We need to get better at not letting water meters be put in driveways and sidewalks, but you know, these things, you know, we can kind of step forward and then step back and have to step forward again. We've been having a process about how to identify where accesses will be. It's not as much of a deal in a residential neighborhood because the house has a driveway, has an access, but when you're out in the, in the industrial and the commercial areas, well, where are the right places for accesses, how wide should they be? How do we permit those? How were they built? Same thing with addressing, establishing a formal addressing program, it's been done informally in the past. We have submitted an application for the, for a transportation and growth management program planning grant. And that would be an update to the interchange area management plan for Main Street. We'll see if we're successful, we should find out in September if we were successful at that. And we've been creating application forms, next step is to work with Jackie and Jen to update the work website and get those things posted. And that's kind of the next thing on the list there is that we've initiated some work to update the community development and planning webpages at the city website. We'll be doing more as we go, it'll be incremental, do a page at a time, add some additional documents, kind of fine tune it, help people guide folks through the processes that they needed. And then starting that long list, and I know Barry had one and I've, I've got it and we're going to look at that and then build on it, reorder it, reprioritize it, but what do we need to, to do relative to making amendments to both the municipal and the development code? We also know we have inconsistencies between our TSP, our transportation system plan, and our interchange area management plans to the development code and then to the public work standards. There's not, they're not consistent. And so we know we need to address those inconsistency issues, so. That's kind of a, it's kind of a, there's a lot in there, but that's kind of what we've been working on for the last five and a half months. Having to answer any questions you might have, actually, I think as of this week, it's six months, so.
Staying busy.
Yeah. Yeah. Any questions?
Off the top of my head.
Okay.
Well, interesting process though.
Having fun, having fun, that's, that's the important part, right? So. All right. So last time we talked about the training topic and I don't want to spend a lot of time on this, I want to kind of hit this high level. I want you guys to kind of think about it and, and maybe come back next time with questions, but the additional thing on your table tonight, a couple of you have your books, other folks have already gotten their books, but you've got a book now and it's got three things in there, put this one to the back, so the orange paper will define again what's behind that. We will eventually get to the first two things in the book. Not going to avoid them, you will, we will eventually get there. The third thing in the book was the brochure that talks about the statewide planning goals. And we, I kind of just gave you guys a really high level, this is what the, the, there's 19 of them, 14 apply over here. There's a one, I'm a Greenway goal and there's four coastal goals, which we don't, we don't have to deal with. What the comprehensive plan does and why I provided that to you next, and so that's what you're seeing here behind this orange sheet. The comprehensive plan is our local application of those 14 statewide planning goals. You'll notice from the little notation in the upper right-hand corner of each of these is the last time these were revised was in April of 2003. As I've been digging around in Barry's office and, and I have found a 1971 comprehensive plan. And another one that maybe, maybe there's one that even predates that, I think the other one might predate that. And so when I, when I update the, the first page, I'm going to do a little work on, kind of for, for, for me and Jackie and Jen, I'll kind of get a sense of what we're doing, is we're going to actually focus on the comprehensive plan page. It's kind of not, may not seem like the, the most high priority place to start, but that's good because a lot of people go there, but we can play around with it, make sure we're getting it right. We're going to post those old plans, not that they're applicable, but provides people with history. And there's some really interesting stuff in there about where Boardman was at in the 50s and 60s and 70s and 80s and, and how growth happened and when it happened, it provides an interesting history. But this is the comprehensive plan that is in place today, it is on the website, it's there in 14 chapters, so there's 14 PDFs. And they each implement again the corresponding goal. So chapter one is the community, community involvement goal and it basically outlines what we do and how we do it. Goal two is the planning goal, again, outlines what we do and how we do it. Goal three and goal four, we don't really deal with, we don't have agricultural lands inside the city limits and we don't have forest lands inside the city limits. And, and we could evaluate that and make a decision to have some language around goal three because we certainly have farmland at our edges. And when we seek to expand our urban growth boundary, we're going to have to deal with reaching out to farmland. So there may be some value in looking at the goal three only from the perspective of should, if and when we expand our urban growth boundary, there are some rural residential lands that we could look at for expansion to the west. But if we look at the land that sits kind of between the current game data center and the port interchange, that 80 acres of blueberries is farmland and, and other land out that way is farmland. So there may be value in having something in our comprehensive plan that discusses the agricultural nature of our, of not the city itself per se, but of our, our zip code, so to speak. Goal five is the natural hazards goal, or excuse me, the natural resources goal. More natural resources tend to, tend to be found in the county than in the cities. But we have a few, there are some wetland areas, there are some, there are some things that the city has said and those might be important, maybe we should think about what we do about them. Goal six is the air, the land and the water quality. Clearly we've all been reading the papers recently about water quality issues. The city's water is safe, but there are certainly some wells in the La Guama that are concerning. And from the city's perspective, what is the city's role in addressing that? Goal six says that we need to protect our resource, our water. We continue to do that. Again, this plan is 2003, so we probably need to look at goal six from a perspective of we've updated our water management and conservation plan in that time period. We've updated other water and wastewater planning documents. The La Guama has addressed and has an updated action plan, and so those things probably should be identified and referenced in here to be a little more current. Goal seven is a natural hazards goal, not a lot of hazards in Boardman. And Boardman is a participant and, and is covered by the county's natural hazards mitigation plan. And, which is a plan that they are in the process now of updating. And so my recommendation as we get to the topic about when, how we update this, is that goal seven, we're just going to reference that we have a natural hazards mitigation plan because it addresses all of the natural hazards in the county and we have a specific annex in our, in that plan that we can directly reference to meet our goal seven requirements. It is more robust than this would ever be. We do have a floodplain, in our development code, we also have a floodplain development requirements. We do have a little bit of floodplain, interestingly enough, in Boardman, but not a lot. The John Day is a, a lot of people don't know this, but the, the primary purpose of the John Day Dam is actually flood control, not power generation, power generation for the John Day Dam is a secondary function. So our shore here is, is truly flood control, even more than other places along the Columbia River. It has flood control options. Eight is recreation. Karen and I have talked a little bit about where do we go next, kind of with parks and park planning. The city doesn't have a park plan. The brick district, the recreation district has a parks plan, which is out of date and they've recognized that and have identified. And, and I don't know if it's on the list for the new debt director down there or not, but something we could certainly work in collaboration with them if they choose to update that. But are there other recreation things we want to look at? Should we reference other things that are happening again in the zip code or even beyond? Things to think about as we look at that. Goal nine and goal 10 are, are linked, although very distinct. Goal nine is the economic development goal, goal 10 is the housing goal. There has been a recent housing needs analysis that was done in 2018, 2019. We've blown through those estimates, every community in this six-city area here. And I say six-city because for me, when I think about Boardman, to Hermiston, to Echo, this is a big community and we, this is the industrial center clearly and Hermiston is the commercial center. We all have houses, some of us have neighborhood commercials that are happening, some more than other. Umatilla wants to think they're an industrial sector and I live there, so this is really, you know, a conflict for me. They want to think they're the industrial sector, but they're tiny in comparison to what's happening here. But they, they make an impact and certainly from the Amazon perspective, Boardman and Umatilla are dealing with this very similar issues with housing and industrial land and is there enough and how do we address that? And so both the communities and the respective counties are trying to figure out how to meet that demand. So goal nine and goal 10, goal 10 is the housing goal. Again, we have this housing needs analysis, we've kind of blown through it. We've already met a lot of those benchmarks and it's not even five years old yet. So we know we're going to need to update the housing needs analysis, at which point in time we need to update goal 10. Get those, I mean, again, this was all adopted in 2003, it's for all intents and purposes, a 20-year-old plan. We know it's going to be out of date. Goal nine is the employment goal. I don't know the last time that the the city did any kind of kind of employment lands inventory, there was an annexation in 18 of industrial land at the port. And that added industrial land to the city's inventory, it didn't change the inventory overall. It just shifted it from being in the county's inventory to being in the city's inventory. But we need to take a look at that inventory, do we have the right amount of, of commercial and industrial land? Is it in the right place? If we were to add more, where would it be? So those are questions that are going to be in front of us as we figure this out. Goal 11 is the public services goal, so as much as I talked about in goal five and six, more six with the air, water and land quality, goal 11 is the public services goal, and so again, water and wastewater come into play, the, the facilities plans, how we're going to deliver those services, but that goal also talks about, or, or its intent is to talk about other public facilities, schools, fire, police, health facilities, so whatever might a community need to kind of meet all those needs of its residents can be addressed through your public facilities, chapter, chapter 11. Chapter 12 is all about transportation. And the city hasn't adopted TSP, it's now over 20 years old. We have a Main Street interchange area management plan, it's over 10 years old. The Porta Moro interchange area management plan is also right at 10 years old with an update happening, but the update is really only addressing the north side, although as we did that, we determined the south side didn't need changes. But that doesn't mean that something won't happen from a land use perspective or somebody might think, well, that's the right place to expand the city and then how do we, what would happen to the transportation network? So that, that plan may also need an update at some point in time. So we've got three transportation plans, the overarching TSP and then two interchange area management plans. Again, as I shared earlier, we've submitted the grant to do the TGM for the TGM money, hopefully we get it, to update the interchange area management plan for Main Street. But we still need to update the TSP, and so that would be a project that would follow that. Are you guys feeling like there's a whole lot of work coming your way pretty soon? Feeling right yet? Okay, just, just wondering. At the end of this process, if, when the TSP is updated, I think what you do with your comprehensive plan is your chapter 12 gets down to about a half a page and it says we haven't adopted TSP and it fulfills our obligations under goal 12. And that's all it needs to say. And it's kind of the same thing with chapter seven with the natural hazards. We are party to a natural hazards mitigation plan, which meets our obligations under goal seven. Because this document gets lighter and shorter with those kinds of, of opportunities. Goal 13, as I said when we talked about the, the brochure last time, goal 13 is the energy goal. It's kind of the throwaway goal because it's about energy conservation, although with gas at $5 a gallon, maybe we'll feel like the 1970s again. I know some of you don't even remember the 1970s. But the Jimmy Carter gas rationing era could be back and if that's the case, then maybe goal 13 will have value again, I don't know. Goal 14 is the urbanization goal and it's really about how, where and how we grow and what the process is, how that all happens. And at this point in time, when you think about where the city grows, we have we actually have a fair amount of land inside our urban, inside the city limits that has sat idle for a really long time. And we drive by it every day, it's the, you know, it's 65 acres on the other side of Main Street right here, which is zone for commercial use. And then there's land just to the south of that, that's a circle and a half. And so I think almost all of it for residential use and it's still actively farmed. And so hopefully we begin to see processes as Boardman continues this kind of boom that's happening and the growth. Hopefully we see those, those properties, those landowners engage in figuring out how to develop that so that we can, you know, we can take what's been kind of happening on this side of Main Street and mirror it on the other side and create a downtown core. And we can see the next housing development start just to the south of that in that, in one or both of those, that circle and a half. But for that, the question then is, but where do we grow? How quickly do we fill that land and then once that's filled, where do we go after that? Is it the blueberry fields between the data center and the port interchange? Or is it land to the west of the town? Or is there, is there some room to the south to further push? We are limited, the rivers to the north, the bombing ranges to the south. So probably not in my planning lifetime, maybe not even in your lifetime of being working resident of Boardman, we may not see it grow to that. We still have to think about that even now as we think about planning, you know, the transportation system plan, where does the future roads go? Urban growth boundary, where we, where do we want to grow first, where's the second place we want? So those are all the things that we think about as we kind of work through that comprehensive plan. The thing about a comprehensive plan is it is a guidance document, we don't regulate through the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan sets the policy. There's some analysis, there's findings and then there's, there's goal statements or policy statements. And it is, it is, the development code is then directed or derived from those policy statements. So in goal 10, you have policies about how you want housing to happen. Your development code, your residential zones in your development code should reflect what goal 10 sets. Goal 10 should, should, should be talking about, we want to mix the housing types. We want the opportunity to make sure we have houses for people who are entering the workforce, for those who are in, you know, have large families, for those who are empty nesters like myself and then for those who are, who are retirees, who maybe want a much smaller footprint. So how do we make sure we have housing stock that meets all of those lifestyle stages? And so the comprehensive plan provides that guidance or those policies and the development code is what implements them. And so you want to make sure that you're not saying something in your comp plan that you can't achieve in your development code or that you're driving yourself to a place you can't go or get to, you want, you want to, we, all these things need to be eventually pointing to the same, to the same end result. And that would be the same for each of those goals, whatever they may be. Same thing with the recreation goal, you want to have policies, findings and policies that then drive what your code might say about how parks are identified and developed, how walking paths are developed in the city, where are they required, when are they required? You want to make sure that these parts and pieces are talking to each other in a reasonable way, in a way that developers can read it and go, okay, I get it, I'm going to have to make sure there are sidewalks and where I have certain terminuses or where I'm adjacent to school property, I'm going to have to have a walking path. Or whatever those requirements or policies might be that come out of the comprehensive plan to, to get to where you've got them. Um, you've got them, so you could implement them with your development code. Why do we have one? We're required by law to have one. In Oregon, so nineteen seventy-one, uh, Senate Bill one hundred was passed, it created the land use planning program. And it says, communities shall have comprehensive plans, communities shall have development codes. But it's interesting, you go to a lot of states and a lot of communities. Uh, we're, we're getting some new e permitting software for the building program, we'll be able to run planning through that and. Code and dog licensing and a variety of things, and we're having these meetings. And Jackie, who many of you probably know, she said, oh, there's this really great video that Citizens Surf has about um. South Dakota, Sturgis, Sturgis, South Dakota, so she forwarded the link to the video and I watched the video. And I want. That's a really conservative state, from a politics perspective, South Dakota is about as far from Oregon as you can get. And I thought. Do they have a comprehensive plan? Do they have a development code? Is someone a school clerk? And you know what? It looked an awful lot like ours. I was really kind of surprised. There was an awful lot of similarities, um, and not exactly like ours, but there was again, an awful lot of similarities. They had residential use zones, they had commercial use zones, they, they, all of that was in there. How did, how they dealt with transportation, how they dealt with pedestrians, how people got from point A to point B. So Oregon was certainly um ahead of the game when it comes to comprehensive plans, when it comes to development codes. When Oregon created this framework, it was really derived initially and a lot of the the impetus for us. For where we are today. Was the protection of both farm and forest land. That was why we established land use planning in Oregon, or at least that's what they tell us. Um, fast forward forty plus years and it doesn't feel like we've stayed there. Um, it just gets very frustrating to have a conversation about how to do reasonable things on farmland. Um, and and uh, we can't do anything out here on rock. Rocky scrap land, um, but they've paved over most of the Willamette Valley, um, which is the best farmland. In the Pacific Northwest and maybe beyond. Um, I mean, it's, it's, it's the, it's the west half of the Palouse that got shifted down there during the, you know, the Missoula flood, so. It's really good farmland, if you walk around the Palouse where they still have that beautiful soil and you go down the. The Willamette Valley, you could see a lot of similarities. Um. Where. You know, a lot of it, it's been forty years, so there's been a lot of changes. Um, a lot of laws have passed, a lot of changes have happened in, you know, Oregon, the philosophies and how, how we do what we do. Um, but I think the comprehensive plan still has a really valid role. Um, it helps us ground who we are, why we do what we do, um, what our. What our philosophy is, I mean, that's one way to think of it, it kind of. You're not gonna regulate from your comprehensive plan, but you're gonna state your policies that are gonna drive then how you do regulate. Further down the road. Um. How do we use it? Um. The comprehensive plan. It's not shelf art, we do use it, it's not like we wrote it and then we wrote our development code and we'll never use it again. Uh, whenever somebody comes in and wants to change the development code. Or the T S P, it has to comply with the comprehensive plan. Because again, those policy statements that are in the trend, are in the comprehensive plan still are gonna guide. Those change, those development code components, so there still has to be applicability back to the comprehensive plan. Um, can you change the comprehensive plan? Well, obviously, it's been changed and yes, you can. Um, and when you do that, you're, one thing you're doing is confirming that the policies are still valid. That's. Again, with it being twenty years old, a lot has happened in the last twenty years. What has changed and should our thoughts about how certain things happen be different? Um, do we have a good plan about how we want those sixty-five acres of uh, commercial land to develop, and if not. Do we want to get ahead of whatever might be coming? Um, or work with the developer to make sure we get what we want, and if that means a change to the code. As we go through the process, then maybe we need to change the code as we go through the process. And if we do that, it still has to comply. With the philosophy or the theory or the policies that are in the comprehensive plan. Haven't watched it yet, you guys aren't nodding off yet, so. Questions?
Yeah, there's a lot of pressure.
Well, yeah, I I don't want to overwhelm you and yet I want you to think about it and I want you, if there's questions or questions come up, email me. Reach out, you know, I'm I'm happy to. Dig deeper into something if you want to, I, again, I wanted to kind of keep this high level, I didn't want to be here really late tonight. Um. But I want to get your juices flowing and thinking about. The the bottom line is, I think that there's some, probably some pretty significant planning work that's ahead of. You know, the planning staff and the planning commission over the next probably couple of years. Um, if we, if we get the grant funding for the interchange area management plan. Um, we'll be asking one or two of you to participate in a technical, technical or public advisory committee process. And that clearly will go through a workshop and a joint work session and, you know, with the city council and then we'll move towards adoption. Um, that will probably drive some changes to the development code, it may drive some changes to. To the T S P or even to the comprehensive plan. So kind of understanding who, what all these documents are and how they all fit together, again. You know, I'm I'm coming at this cold, so if I'm, if I'm telling you stuff you already know, raise your hand and say. We've heard all this, we can move on, if not, then we'll keep, we'll keep working through it, so. Um, yeah. Those are my thoughts for tonight.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's awesome.
We were very well aware of this. Shortly after I joined the commission. We never really got down to weeds of it, but. It's all very interesting.
Yeah, yeah, and and again, um. You know, I I want to build this binder for you guys so that you have a resource. Um, I guarantee you that some of this you will read and it will put you to sleep, so if you have insomnia. Just get your binder out, keep it near the bed, but I think some of it you will find interesting from the perspective of, well, how and why this development happened? Or why do communities do the things that they do? You know, why do we have public hearings? Why do we provide notice to the public? Why do we publish in a newspaper? You know, all that starts from goal one around community involvement. We're required to do these things, but we should be doing these things, because we do want the community to be engaged and involved. I mean, it'd be great if there was more than one person in the audience. Um. They certainly show up when it's affecting their property, but what I think a lot of people don't understand. Is when they, when they really need to be here is when we're making changes to the development code, when we're making changes to the comprehensive plan. That's when people need to be engaged. Because if they're here to complain about the neighbor doing something that they don't want on the lot across from them. That's just a zoning permit. They're too late to the game. They should have been having that conversation. Before that, um. Because most communities adopted a comprehensive plan thirty plus years ago, most of people. You guys don't remember when Boardman adopted the original comprehensive plan, you may not have even lived here in oh three. When the current comprehensive plan was adopted. So it's, it's a conversation that we need to figure out how to. We have every once in a while and keep the conversation fresh so that people. Understand. Again, kind of what the philosophy or the theory is behind how Boardman's going to grow, because that, the comprehensive plan really sets the tone for that. That's where it comes from. I need at least one good question.
Well, I have one good comment. You all, most of you have lived here probably at least five or ten years. And in ten years, Boardman is not the community, it was ten years ago. And this is why the planning part and having, you know, she's mentioned that, you know, we haven't updated, you know, and. And and how the comp plan and the development codes that need to work together, but. You know, if you have two or three documents and they aren't quite the same. Then when people come in to see Carla, it makes it really hard to make a decision. And that's what you're gonna be charged with is, and this is gonna be, like she says, a process for you. So that you will understand, um. You know, and I'm gonna use an example here of when developers come. I was, we were, I was getting at a map the other day and the the lots were like ten thousand. Which is big. Our, ours right now says eight. And we've got a developer that wants to do sixty-eight or fifty-five. So, so those are the things that when, when you start to do this. You need to go home, step off your lot. So that you have something in your mind about what, what like ten by fifty looks or, you know, what, whatever the figures are. Because these are the things that, regardless of what the words say, when you get out here in the street. And we have to make a decision about, oh dear. The sidewalk should have been there, but darn, it quit back there always, I mean, like three feet. Okay, three feet. On the given day they did this, probably wasn't a big deal, but it is if you wanted to connect to the next sidewalk. Kind of a thing. And then that puts the city in kind of a bind, because then the owner says, well, you didn't say so. Well. Okay, maybe I didn't say so. Maybe I assumed you knew. So then does that make assumption make, mean that, gosh, maybe I should pay, the city should pay for half the sidewalk? And the owner should pay for the other half. That's not how we really like to conduct business. So it's really important. To try to get all of our ducks going. In the same direction and, and that's why the responsibility here with the planning commission is. Really important, I mean, whether we have somebody here with a, with a new. Plan that you have to make a decision on, like we've had people in the audience. The background and the decision making you're gonna make now is going to last. Probably twenty years before we get around to doing it again, I mean, you know, it it takes, it takes a lot of effort and time to do these programs. And money, by the way. You know, I mean, these are not usually free. And so this, uh, yeah, this, you're starting at a great time for Boardman as we're quickly progressing.
Yeah, and I guess I should would add to that Karen, that the comprehensive plan being adopted in two thousand and three. Until two thousand and thirteen, probably not a lot had changed.
No.
I mean, there, there was, there's a little here, a little there, but there just wasn't, I mean, there. I remember sitting in a lot of meetings with Karen, talking about, well, we can't get the hardware store until we get a few more people. And we can't get people without the hardware store. That's a conundrum. Well, finally, we were getting a whole lot of people and we had a hardware store, so. And something happened, the log jam broke, but in that, all of a sudden, we had documents that were satisfying, they, they filled the purpose. And now they don't. And it happened that fast and um, so, yeah.
I mean, you're, 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 you've got a. I mean, it's, it's nice to have an input in something great that's gonna happen to a community. So you should be happy to be here. I'm happy to have you here.
So do you have a question for it?
Okay.
He said it's chapter six, part four.
Chapter eight, chapter eight is recreation.
Recreation, alright, so that would be with parks. So if we don't have a uh. Tax, a line now, right? When we're building these new developments, how do we put into the development that they have to have a park so far? How does that work?
That's a really good question, because the development code is not really clear either. So um, I'll be honest, I haven't read. Uh, chapter eight in the comprehensive plan, I haven't read it with, you know, a thought to all of this. So when we get the next application for a subdivision, that that will be, I mean, that's. You certainly have the authority as a planning commission to say, you're putting in a hundred and ninety-two homes, you need to put a park in. Um. But I think we need a better planning document to know where we want parks. I mean, I think that's the other part, it's, it's how do we balance, because, okay, we've got, we've got a park out there in the middle of a hundred and ninety-two, ninety-two homes. But is the park where we wanted it? Is it, it, does it function the way we want it to function? And as a community, we need to know what kind of parks we need, we've, we've added a splash pad, we've added a, a, a dog park, we've, I mean. And there's a lot of green space, when you look at, at, there's a place structure at the safety center, there's this place structure out here. Um, you know, and there's some other smaller neighborhood parks. Um, and then there's the marina and all that it offers. So working with the park district and the city, how do we figure out what we do want and what we do need? You know, and again, Karen and I, the other day, we're talking a little bit about green space and park planning and. You know, kind of where we go and and it, it's, again, it's another one of those things that would, when we, when we're either doing this at a, at a, at kind of a. You know, a whole, maybe at a really high level, really, at the comprehensive plan level, or thinking about getting to a actual park plan. That, it's an interesting planning process, I um. City of Yumital has recently finished a park planning process. And the outcome of that is really interesting, they've got several new concepts. Um, the city has over the last several years taken over the marina there in Yumital and they've got some plans to. Oh my gosh, add RV spaces, they're gonna put yurks in. Um, they've got more ball fields planned. Um, pickleball is now the thing and they've figured out where they're gonna, they're gonna do some things around pickleball. Um, at the bar, uh, where you turn to go into the port, there's two roads into the port now. The first road, I think, is Bud Draper. Um, right there at that corner, uh, they've identified that for um, Hash Park, Hash, George Hash was the mayor in Yumital for. Years. Uh, that they're looking, there's already a park there, but they're looking at expanding that all the way to that intersection and it would all be parked there and improved, so. It's. It's a process to undertake the planning. But once you do the planning, then people expect you to build parks, and so you, you, you have to go into the planning process, understanding. That when you get to the other end of it, then you, you're creating expectations for what comes after that. I don't know that I actually answered your question, but hopefully I've put enough things around the outside that.
Well, and. I can't sit here just to be quiet, I'm sorry. But, and I don't know if it will come to that, but I know that uh, the people that are developing baiting park. He continued, because he's putting in enough lots. That there's some kind of, you know, out of every lot, you have to have two feet or something, I don't. But so. Well, he just thinks that Dune Park is just down the street. And so that maybe he could just go put some playground equipment in Dune Park. Well. Okay, I don't know what the rule is, but I have an opinion. And I said, nobody plays at Dune Park. I'm not sure you should make an investment in something that. You're gonna have to do a lot of work to Dune Park if you're gonna make it so that it's safe and something that somebody wants to come play in. So maybe you should do it in your own area where I, as a mother, can step out and look. At least down, you know, four doors and see my kids playing in the park. So those are kind of the things that, when you're talking about parks and where you want them. You know, it was a big deal to, because there was no parks on this side of the freeway for years. So we put in the basketball court. And we're surprised at how many kids and young adults will come and play basketball. So then, you know, money cures a lot of things, but then we've got a little extra money, and so we put in the park over here. And it is just, it's just.
Always people over there.
Yeah, it's just great to have your window face that, because there's always people with kids out there. So I think that's what you have to kind of look at, is where. You know, where people are that feel safe enough to have their children go to, or maybe is. Or maybe it's good enough to ride their bike or whatever. Okay, I'm done.
Well, maybe.
Well, it would be nice to, like, okay, if, if we build X amount of houses, we need to have X amount of park space. A document that tells us that, that someone people come in and say, hey, I would like to have this, you know, this stuff, okay, well, based on this, our document says you need this. So something that supports us and not just it being, oh, well, we just want you to do it because we want you to do it. No, we want you to do it because this piece of paper right here tells us.
Yeah, there's some,
Tells you that they need to stop.
There's some guidance in the development code. There is some guidance there about how we get to that. But I think there's, I think there's the companion conversation about, but where's the right place to put the park? Where's the right place to put the investment? And what kind of investment do we need? And I don't know that we have those answers. So we've got to figure out how to balance those. You know, we, we've got a requirement that they have to contribute. Well, where, how do we want that contribution? Where do we want that contribution? And what do we want that contribution to be? So we've got work to do, clearly, yeah. Well, we can shift, we can, we can end this topic and move into public comment.
I'm guessing it was about the park.
Yeah. We'll, we'll get there, we'll get, we'll get in there. Unless there's any final question, I'm done, but we can go ahead, Zach, and move into public comment.
Open up a public comment?
Sure, I think for me,
A name and address for the record?
Isaiah Valencia, one oh one, Southwest Eagle Drive. But I think the big thing with your two questions, the comments, is, I mean, I know there is something in, in the code. I know what's going on, but I think the big thing would be working on what kind of community you're wanting in that area. So say, for instance, River Ridge is kind of, we're, we're more attuned to, you know, the first time home buyers, you know, the first time home buyers that have, you know, smaller families and stuff, they have small kids. You know, it's testing. The states, it's, you know, the popular, they're fourth home. Bigger family, older kids. So the park that's going on, there, there is a walkway park that's going on there. It's probably just a green space, it has, it's going to have some benches and stuff. The one that we're building, right, as, right now, it's just green space. We haven't been told anything, I think it's really setting up something for you, give specifics of what you, you're wanting. I mean, because we could give you green space all day, but what is it really for? Just grass, walk your dog out there. If you have a playground, that, that'd be something, you know, to put into there. I think it just depends on what kind of community you're expecting in that area, if that makes sense. Because I know, earlier you mentioned, you know, you got the, the communities possibly, you know, the retired people, I mean, they're really going to want playground. You got the dispersed home buyers that, you know, sometimes they have kids, sometimes they don't, or they need a playground for it. But there's those families that you're not having, which you're going to want a green space, you're going to want the kids to go somewhere safe. But it just depends on what you want to actually put into that park. I got, I've done this, I've built the three universities now. Built parks, I've actually built a veterans park that has, there's a big space, I forget how big it was, but we had two playgrounds. Splash, splash pad in the middle, we did it all as a developer. So, I mean, it just, that's what you guys are here for. Tell us which one. That's really what we're talking about.
Perfect, thank you, just my question.
Yeah, no, thank you, appreciate that. Well, there's commission comments, and I do need to have a conversation with you guys about the September planning commission meeting. For a lot of reasons, I'll, I'll just share. I was going to take a trip at the end of July or the first part of August to South Dakota to see my grandkids. But my husband got a kidney stone and my mom passed away. And so I didn't make it to Madison to see my grandkids. So I'm planning really hard to create two weeks in September where I can drive, spend about a week and drive home and not be pressured. Because in March, I did the drive there in three days and drive home in two, and I'm not doing that again. Not, not doing that again. So I'd really like to ask you guys to move the September public meeting from the twenty-first to the twenty-eighth. Is there anybody that, that would be a problem with?
Is, is there anything on the agenda?
At this point in time, there is nothing on the agenda. We will probably be doing something like this again. And I don't want to just start canceling planning commission meetings. But no, I don't have anything in the queue that's going to require a public hearing.
Is it hunting season?
Yeah.
The thing that makes everything?
I know, it messes everything up. My mom's birthday was October fifth, and that was always the first week of deer season, because my dad was never home for my mom's birthday. So I, I know September twenty eighth is getting close, it's supposed to be.
Is that a September?
I didn't get the taxes here. It doesn't affect me.
Was it the twenty eighth?
Yeah.
I'm good with it.
I'm good with it, yeah. Okay, all right, we're going to go with September twenty eighth. I'll work with Jen to modify the, the website, get that date changed on there. We'll change the reader board as we get closer, so I appreciate that consideration. Thank you, thank you. Yeah, so. I think that's, unless you guys have comments yourselves, I mean, there's commission comments is on here. I want you guys to be able to reflect and, and share, so.
I'm, I'm just very excited about going over all this information. Personally, I've been here since I turned ninety-six. Very different being on this side.
Yeah. Anybody else?
It's true to me.
Thank you.